Was it eighty cents?
Yes.
That's the number of what the company is?
That's the max we can borrow.
Well, see, the weird part is take the amount that's requested, and you divide it by the amount of value, and then that gives you the mill levy. And it just happened to be below eighty cents, but we're actually still.
So we order fifty eight cents.
I mean, that's not impossible. It all depends on what the request is. Why just say seventy six?
Seventy six. Seventy six three.
Right.
This is what it was actually.
Yeah, if it was an opt out in the traditional sense, that you would just request a flat amount each year.
And that goes along with the CPI high.
Correct. And growth is a flat, right? Which makes it really strange, because it's not like a lot of other add-on levies.
The Riden Bridge levy can go up.
By growth in CPI.
So we can add the growth in CPI, so if the general levy and the Riden Bridge levy?
Well, how, why does that make sense when we resolve to pass a, that the Riden Bridge levy would be a maximum of eighty cents?
We're still under it, even with growth in CPI.
But we, but we can't.
Whole values.
But we can't.
Requesting that, but so did the value.
Okay. The value of private property.
Yes. So only like our friends in Green Bay, so let's see. Like they have like three one thousands.
People pay attention to their milk, I don't, they'll be excited. They would hate you that much once they know that they're giving you a job last season.
Yeah, it's because the value is going to apply that bill then. Yes, it could be more valid. But according to the theory of equalization, everybody that go up, somebody's goes down.
Never seen that. That's what they tell me. Maybe Jamie could give you the one-on-one on equalization.
That's me. You've got the green folders.
And what do olives look like when it gets introduced in that drink?
Only look up.
Like floaters?
Follow them there, like eyeballs in there.
Where did you have this at?
Oh, college.
A boy.
I needed a lifetime, but it was sort of good.
Yeah. I'm a red people have sort of big beard of more, just beautiful. They're scared like a college town. You can get the light cabinet into a church. A big block, we did. We are, yeah, we have like a cooler, we did a cooler.
Oh, they don't. It's a bad idea to begin with. We call it mafia hunter.
I've never had one since I. Oh, really? Well, that's true. They did turn it up. My inflation factor, huh?
Excuse me.
Thank you. I want to use a favor.
Yeah.
All right, I'll tell the meeting in order for everybody to stand up and report their names.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do any of you have any interest in adding or removing anything from the agenda?
We had one. Nicole had a resolution.
In addition.
Nicole, would you care to inform the rest of us what's up?
All right, I need to add a resolution to participate in the bakery. Correction, under thirty fifty four twelve. And then we also need to sign the award agreement. And I also need to add to the gravel for the material bits, uh, six thousand ton five eighths inch minus P rock.
Five eighths inch. And smaller.
Yeah.
Do you go? Anyone else? Okay. If you're willing to entertain a motion, would you approve said agenda?
I will.
Thank you.
I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended. Is any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes. Okay, Shane.
All right, so, uh, as on your agenda, we applied for and were granted, uh, grant for sixty thousand dollars for new dash cameras and body cameras. So, um, when that grant, we're still going back and forth, signing the grant agreements and everything. We have gotten the notice that we were successful and, uh, we'll be getting the grant. So when that happens, we will order our new cameras. Sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money. And, uh, this is kind of what we're running into for equipment nowadays. Couple companies have the monopoly on all the equipment. You guys saw that with our Tasers last, last year when we bought those. So the final price is fifty nine thousand eight hundred and change. So.
Is that for?
So they have. Take you out for supper with the rest of it, but.
They kind of know what their market is, don't they?
Yeah, yeah, and they actually came down from seventy or something like that, so.
But that's three dash cams.
It's five dash cam, or three dash cams, yes, and five body cameras. And they'll all be linked to a cloud. And the technology is incredible with them. They'll have license plate readers and, they'll have, uh, software that, um, if we want to add it later, can translate on the spot. Push a button on your body camera, say something in English, and it'll translate to whatever language you're speaking. And vice versa, they talk to you and they'll translate right back. We're not getting that feature right now, but this is a five-year contract. At the, at two and a half year mark, we're gonna get new dash cameras free of charge. It's all part of this program. Uh, new dash cameras at two and a half years and new body cameras at five years. And then, once we get to that five-year mark, um, then it'll have to be renegotiated for the sales, or for the service agreements and the licensing. And right now.
Do you have? The Axon. Who did it? E-ville right there. Yeah, go back up. So, so the licensing, the device connectivity, thirteen hundred dollars, and the pro-licensed bundle is twenty-nine, so it comes out to fourteen hundred bucks a year. Well, that's, I'm sorry, that's for the five years. So when it starts over, it's right around, the way I figured it out was about twelve hundred dollars a year for the licensing and service. Now, they can't give us an exact number, what it'll be in five years, but even if it, it'll of course go up, but, uh, it's, it's within, it's feasible, I guess. It's not an astronomical amount we're paying for now is the, the setup and equipment. So. They, it's included. Install with Axon is included. Motorola, it wasn't. They're gonna actually come out and install and show us how to run it. So that was not included with the other bids. Other one we were close to was with Motorola, and they had a few other. Axon's kind of tried and true. They're kind of the top company.
So there's no, it's a one-hundred percent math or?
Yes. Not have to pay anything for five years, so we got really lucky.
It's, and then it's paid upfront, no ongoing till the five-year mark, and then we gotta figure out.
Correct, correct.
But then you're getting new, so you're getting new dash cams in two and a half?
Two and a half years.
And then new body cams at the end of the five.
Yep.
You get to keep the old ones at two and a half years?
I doubt it. I don't, I doubt it.
Where does the grant money come from?
It is coming from, uh, it's Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. It's through the South Dakota Highway Safety or Department of Public Safety, but it is federally funded. Goes through a couple steps, but, uh, it's. So, but, um, so I guess I just need permission to move forward with that and, and order them when they come and everything will still. They're, they're gonna award us the money, and then we'll have to turn around and, and sign the check, so.
I would move, will you move forward as long as all the?
Everything's paid for.
Goes through.
Yep.
As expected.
Mm-hmm.
To purchase.
Yeah.
What was the brand?
Axon.
Axon.
Yep.
Equipment.
Quote number two.
Quote number two.
I'll give a second if you're done.
But that's the kind of trouble we run into with these, with the equipment, is sixty thousand dollars is not feasible for agencies our size to just, for just one piece of equipment. It's getting ridiculous, so.
Okay, I got a motion in a second to approve the purchase of, from Axon Enterprises, quote number two. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I proposed, motion passes.
Sounds good. That's all I got?
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
Thanks, Shane.
Thanks. So, um, I am requesting to advertise bids for gravel products out of the pile. We've got quarter inch washed sand that would be nice to get a stock of. Three quarters inch minus gravel, which we already talked about and have a contract for a good price from Woodruff, but I, I guess we'll see if the bids on the pile come in at the right price for that. And then I also need to add.
Nicole, how much are you talking on these?
So it's about fifty thousand ton of three quarters crushed gravel for this, to stockpile. Forty-five thousand ton of washed sand. We use that for pothole patching and paving. And then the five eighths inch P rock is the one that I added in that's not on the agenda. And that's about six thousand ton.
That's P rock up to five inch, or three, five inch.
Up to five eighths inch, yeah.
So the, so the quarter inch, that is?
Quarter inch minus is sand. It's considered sand.
So that basically would be like P rock.
Smaller. It's finer. It includes a lot more of the fines. The, the P rock is actually filtered out to like between five eighths and the, and the fines are removed. So.
How big of a pile do we have down there?
How, how big of a pile do we have?
Of crushed gravel, though.
In the Woodruff pit right now? We had, we had eighty thousand ton, we used forty thousand of it, so we're down to forty. So this would just take it kind of back up to where it was. But like you said, if, if we did get the bid back down there again, it's gonna be very reasonably priced. If we can get something less than that elsewhere, that would be.
But that pile, the gravel's paid for, but crushing isn't? Is that true? Yeah?
Right, right now, um, what we had down there in the pile that we own is paid for. Um, we do have a pile up in the Martin Moss pit up north that is not yet paid for. But we're anticipating, looking at the funds, we'll be able to pay that in December.
The product is not paid for or just part of the crushing is not paid for?
I guess it would be the crushing, because we still need to pay Brownlee for the product in the pile, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to advertise for those products.
One second.
We've got a motion in a second to approve, to advertise for the supplies for the highway department, gravel. Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes.
Then. Okay. Then I'll move on to the Resolution twenty twenty-five fifteen. Authorize the execution of the big agreement is what it will be. Because the Department of Transportation needs published minutes for this resolution in order to validate our contract with them for our award of the, the big grant for the bridge south of Valand. This is why we're doing this. So basically, we're authorizing the execution of the big agreement. It says, whereas Hand County wishes to obtain funding under the Bridge Improvement Grant Program, and now therefore let it be resolved. Chairman Dan Jensen is authorizing the funding agreement for the one approved state project, BRF sixty-two seventy-five zero zero twenty-six dash one, Hand County, PCN zero ADG, structure thirty dash two fifty dash four twelve.
I would imagine.
Yes, I believe.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Got a motion in a second to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one five. Uh, is there any discussion?
This is the one in the, the state just approved, yeah.
For twenty twenty-six.
The engineering has been completed, right? Or this is the approval for the engineering?
This is the new one for the primary or preliminary engineering to start. Yes.
And there's one that we talked about, we just never formally.
Yeah, we talked about it last month. I was expecting this in my email before we had the meeting, and it never did show up till the day after, of course.
Okay, no, hearing no discussion, do a roll call vote. Palmer?
Aye.
Eschenbaum?
Aye.
Mordenzmann?
Aye.
Schrausberg is absent. Dan Jensen is aye.
Then. We also need to approve the notice of award form. Let's see. This is the grant agreement that we are entering into. It is on the back of a letter instead of. It withdrew me a little bit, so.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We've got a motion in a second to approve authorization. Transportation Commission Award. I guess. All, now is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes.
And then we're talking about permit to operate the right-of-way.
I think I just talked about the fact that you read this form.
Okay.
Even though it's not as long.
Right. Right, so I sent you guys a copy of this in your email. But I, I re-formatted the permit to occupy the right-of-way. We haven't had to deal with this too much, I don't think, as far as people like drain tiling under the right-of-way. I was talking to a gentleman. And actually, I should say, I was talking to a lot of different superintendents at our recent meetings, and we were discussing drain tiling and how it's impacting our counties and how it's being regulated or not. I guess some people are having, people, basically, they, they don't ask for permission. They just kind of drain tile into the right-of-way, which causes flooding downstream and causes issues for bridges. So I, I formatted this form so that we're asking the questions that we need to know to, instead of having people asking for forgiveness, that they would have to ask for permission instead, I guess.
So what were they, what were they trying to do here? Were they just gonna dump the water in the ditch?
No.
And let the ditch do the right-of-way or what?
They were not. It's, it's, that was never their intention, I don't believe. But.
Looks like they're actually going clear south into Pearl Creek.
Yeah.
And discharging there.
So they're crossing.
There's a map on the third page.
So they're gonna pour under the road?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. So the, we, yeah, we've had individuals ask to drain tile under the road, under the right-of-way to send water across the road and down into a creek, which it is required that you would have to discharge into a, a, what do they call it? A blue line?
Like here's half mile line.
A blue lined ditch. A blue lined access.
Is that an actual drainage where the water gets?
Yes.
In the creek and gone instead of flooding, flooding somebody else.
An existing, an existing creek where the water will be sent downstream.
This is solid, by the way, all the way to there. And then I think it turns back to drain tile. I'm assuming they, they're maybe draining this piece too, but they're getting it clear with Pearl Creek. Getting it dumped where it hasn't been over there in Burnell. In my opinion, um, we should probably have a policy that, that these drain tiles aren't just dumped into our right-of-way. Some, some instances with a small flow, it might not hurt, but other instances, they might be dumping an eighteen inch drain tile, which could cause a.
Or let us off in our roads.
Yeah.
Right, and, and that's just that it can cut into the ditch and, and make it dangerous as the, as the water cuts the, cuts the side of the roadway or the danger.
And the taxpayers end up fixing it.
Right, right.
It wasn't their, wasn't their action, but every time we end up fixing these.
Yeah, that's not a situation we've been requested to do. It's just a possibility in the future. And I didn't know if we want to maybe talk about having some sort of a policy on the matter.
And I guess I was thinking, I don't know if it should, I mean, we could discuss whether it should be a policy or if it's gotta be in some sort of ordinance drainage-wise or something like. Because I was just wondering, even on this permit, we kind of just created a permit that we're granting.
Right.
And I don't know if it needs to have something behind it other than.
So since we're not the ones that actually approve drain tile projects, I think it's only wording that applies to, you know, to our right-of-ways that we would, that we would forward to the, whatever entity is in charge of approving drain tile projects. But this has to be part of your, part of your plan, is gonna dump it into the right-of-way, at least without permission. Looks like there might be some instances where a six inch, twelve inch tile, and I've heard a thing, dumping it right-of-way that goes fifty feet, gets into the creek or whatever. But if they only gotta go fifty feet, they can get it all the way to the creek too. Is this, this is gonna become a dish. Drain tile, I mean. They have the right here. Just almost guaranteed then the issues of coming down since the drainage. Worried about how can we? It's not our decision. I don't know who approves drain tile projects. Is it an actual, technically USDA or local FSA?
I talked to NRCS about it. They said, they, people come to them, and all they have to do is basically follow their wetland criteria. So if you have a established wetland, they just say, well, I'm just gonna make up a number, but you stay fifty feet away from this wetland. And if you do that, they don't care. You can do it all as far as I can see. Sounds like, so they really don't know a lot of.
So we. Yeah, I think, I think we have a count. Yeah, I think, I think we as a county with the infrastructure that we've got to take care of, we gotta have, that they're gonna, I mean, if they want tile, that's fine. But you're gonna do it the way, I mean, if you're cutting across our road, you're not gonna get to dig the road up, put your tile, and you're gonna pour underneath. And you're not gonna dump into the right-of-way, because I think that's the really fast way to irrigate a road, a distant road. Because you're, you also gotta realize, you're moving water, water that never went that way, you're moving water that way. So it's, you're putting water into a creek that never got that water through. So that's, we gotta make sure that our roads and our bridges can handle what they're gonna, what's gonna be happening. You're not checking our infrastructure. It's not so much the volume of water that's gonna be happening, that a lot of these creeks will never dry up once they start putting drain tiles in, and then it's starting to have ice cubes. So that's, I mean, really, the flow that's coming is probably not gonna hurt anything on these creeks, but it's these creeks you're gonna stay full of, they're not gonna dry out like they normally do. And that ice is gonna be there for the spring. I would think that's probably gonna be a, an issue.
It's our job as commissioners to protect, oh, they give protection. That's what, that's what taxpayers are paying for, is that infrastructure and, and I'm not against the drain tiling, but, but that discharge is where the question arises, you know? And I think if they, they get it where it, they pipe it to where it gets, so it gets gone, that's, I think it should be part of the equation, except if we have a policy or a, or that requires to get beyond our right-of-way and not be flooding that, then that would be part of the process for NRCS or whatever that they would make sure the discharge isn't affecting our public interest.
Yeah, that's the hard part, though, I'm not really a hydrologist. So, like you said, it gets away from our infrastructure, right, at the present.
Right.
But then, like Luke mentioned, I mean, that, that, it backs up water and then it freezes and in the spring it thaws, and then it takes out the bridge down, the next road down, and then it's affecting our infrastructure. But how, how do you know that's gonna happen?
You don't.
You don't.
Yeah, that's the problem. You don't, I mean, but what I was saying, what we gotta deal with on this particular one is right there. And, and what, what they do with the water after that. Because we really only gotta watch out for the infrastructure.
Well, it doesn't seem obvious, you're saying, you have the ability, you're, you're saying this, then, you as an engineer are the drainage board, correct? Because years ago, Doug, am I correct on that?
Yeah.
They are myself, because you are assuming that the drainage board. You guys have the ability to do it. And then you guys can employ or contract with an engineer, hydrologist, or bear, or ever anybody to give you, if you may question me what to do, because you guys don't know how to navigate on how to move the water, you guys can hire someone to do that, at whose cost I don't know, but it's right here.
Kind of, I love. Yeah.
You know, if you're questioning on how to move water.
Right, well, and I think we're just trying to decide if we're.
Well, my concern is, we need to have something that if they're gonna drain, that they're, it don't destroy your infrastructure.
I think it should, so, Brad.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
But I mean, I think it's better to have something on our books that these, not, uh, do it and ask for forgiveness later.
Yeah.
I'd rather, I'd rather know upfront, can they do it right? What if they do it wrong? We're gonna tell them to tear it up, they can tear it up, then start all over again. I think you need something there to protect yourself from the get-go. Not, that I'm against tiling, it's just that we need to protect the infrastructure.
I guarantee there's tiling that's happened that has never come across.
I know.
Well, and the thing is, unless it crosses the right-of-way, we don't have any regulations on it, you know? So, I mean, if it is happening, it's going through our right-of-ways.
Well, and it, and it doesn't even have to relate to crossing the right-of-way, just dumping into the right-of-way.
Yes, not either.
I, I, I have a real problem with that. I don't, I don't think we should.
And I haven't seen anywhere around the county that that's happening.
It happens in quite a few places.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and.
I know one, you should go there, and I can't believe we had that.
I mean, that's generally the, I mean,
Generally, they do.
Nine times out of 10, they just dumped us in the ditch and never even talked to us, and one day you drive by and you go, there's an outlet there.
Have you seen it on the county roads?
There's, yeah, there's a couple down south here that are, down by others.
That, that one, they actually crossed our right-of-way, though. The trench, yeah, the open cut trench, they crossed it, and, but they were going, they, they didn't put solid pipe.
It was solid pipe.
Across the right-of-way, and they dumped onto their own property on the other side.
And that's the case on this one, too. I, I, I mean, they own the ground on both sides of the road there, they're just crossing it. Yeah, I mean, on this one specifically, it looks like they're kind of, I'm sure it's a benefit to them, but they are going out of their way somewhat to do it the right way and not just dump it in the ditch. Because they could dump it in the ditch, you'd just have to find a covert somewhere and just.
Well, and as far as the permit, like, are we asking the right questions? Is that the guidelines that we want to lay down? Is kind of my question. And.
I would recommend that if you, you go forward with a policy procedure on that, if you're gonna request that a hydrology study be done, make sure that your question is on purpose.
Right.
Say you had one two years ago.
Right.
Well, that, that shouldn't be a burden of the taxpayer either. And, and we have to deal with, with surface drainage, I mean, that's just nature, but this is, this is something beyond natural surface drainage, so.
Yeah, I don't know, the downfall about, and I, I would agree that we would never, never have to pay for study, but if you make that as part of the application, I'm afraid people just won't apply, potentially. You know, they'll just do it like they are, you know what I mean? I don't know.
Well, they'll, they already have to reply with NRCS for, for any drainage project.
Nope.
They don't have to have a, an approved application, really.
He said all they have to, he said they don't care as long as you, all, he said, you, you tell me I'm gonna drain, what he told me, this is the way I interpreted it anyway, let me put it that way. I, I'm gonna drain, I'm gonna tile this quarter, and then he goes, says he looks on the thing and says, well, there's a wetland here, a wetland here, you need to save 50 feet away here, 100 feet there. Done. He doesn't go out and look at it, he just says, that's what you're supposed to do. So it sounds like.
Yeah, if the water's permeating the ground, you can just see it out.
So.
This isn't, this isn't a, this isn't a mission yet, but if more and more drain tile goes in, eventually, it's gonna get to be an issue.
There's a reason there's drainage ditches in Minnesota and other places. I love it.
I've got a niece and a husband that are over in Tracy, and all those drainage canals that they built, all the drain tile they put in, now they're shallow aquifers, wells are drying up. Destroyed the natural process of the water getting out and soaking away to the aquifers. Now, the others are dealing for a little longer because the aquifers are burned up.
Well, in any event, I guess, yeah, for this one in front of us now, we'll probably have to. And I guess we gotta make a decision on what we want to do with it. And my two cents on it is, I, I, I mean, I think I agree that we need to come up with a policy and figure out what constitutes, or what needs to have a permit, what constitutes needing to have a hydrology study, and who's responsible for what. But, on this one specifically, I'm, and we come across this a lot, I'm not a fan of, like, somebody comes to us and asks for something, and then we make them wait for us to come up with a policy and figure out what we're doing while they're waiting, wondering what to do, and we're coming up with a policy to work around what they've already submitted. It seems backwards.
So if we approve this permit for this individual, though, is that what you're asking us to do?
Well, you know, that's.
They have it in the past on NRCS. You know, and if you remember the last one, with the person that was planning the drainage tile, brought it to the display and showed you for all of it.
Yep.
If you wanna hold it till the next meeting, tell whoever is orchestrating the project to give recognition. It might satisfy some of your questions.
I don't, I don't see any reason to wait. I know these guys are wanting to go with this project, and they're running, they're running solid pipe clear over, and then in the drain tile, they're getting it clear to the creek where it's gonna get gone. So I, I may motionally approve this permit, and then maybe develop policy as to exactly how we're gonna regulate this. This, this one's a no-brainer, they're doing their revenue.
I don't know so much as regulate it, but make sure that the county and the tax, county taxpayers aren't on the hook for something that gets down to our infrastructure.
Yep.
With this tiling deal.
Yep.
As far as, you know, knowing if this is the right way to tile or not, I have no idea. But if, the main thing that I'm more worried about is what happens to the county infrastructure. That's long and short of it. And this one here looks like they're doing everything right.
I agree.
Because they're gonna pour under the roadway.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, I mean, I, I, I think we need to grant this one and then work up something. I think.
Definitely. I would, I would just like to know what I need to, what type of a procedure I need to have when asked about these questions, so.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to get to work on that, but I approve to approve this one, so.
Do your second.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the permit to occupy right-of-way?
And then, are we gonna utilize this? You know, like it says, I see where there's, like, markers are to be installed or whatever. I don't know what, obviously, someone operating the right-of-way installing stuff, you know, there's no way, it's not on like a one-call.
Right.
Or if it isn't marked, there's no way of knowing that.
If we go to do work in the, in the ditch or on the roadway or whatever, yes. And that's kind of why.
Obviously, someone's doing something on their property, assume they would have a, talk to them and they would say, oh, there's drain tile here, or whatever, you know, but.
Do we have to register that somewhere? I mean, that's kind of my question as well, is where does it, does it get registered?
Well, like, to get installed on 811, I don't, honestly, I don't know, I don't do that side of things, so.
So maybe we should look into it?
But, I think it's.
It's another one of those things that, yeah, I'm sure that there is probably a process, but I know there's gotta be a lot of water lines and
Yeah, that are not known of.
electrical lines and stuff that's not.
There certainly are, absolutely. But I can tell you that if you cut through this 12-inch solid pipe, it's not gonna be really impressed.
No.
I don't know who's been, maybe who's responsible.
And I have no idea how deep these, how deep they are.
But it says, uh, minimum depth.
So there's, you know, like, in that case, there's electric in that ditch, and there's probably Dakota in that ditch somewhere around that.
Well, I was thinking, I mean, if they could put markers in the fence line about where, where it goes in on one side and where it comes out on the other side, and then we have a, okay, this is where that is.
But I would assume if they're going through the right-of-way, they would have, you know, locate on all of it, I would, I would think. And if they don't, and they hit it, it's.
But if it's boring, it's probably already taken care of that anyway.
Reputable people, yep.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes.
Okay.
So I'm gonna give you an update on 185th Street, which is the road pass, like Eric Parmelee's. It is very much county road, and it very much is used, and it.
Very much, sorry, Doug, what was that?
Road that goes past Eric Parmelee's place, 185th Street.
Okay.
It's the one we talked about briefly because it meanders through that section of ground, or a piece of ground. So in my conversations, basically, visiting with the owner, which is Josie, or Joe Fritzie, he's wanting to sell that ground, and his surveyor said that it would be very tough to sell that ground without knowing the legal stature of the roadway that's going through it, because none of us could locate an easement or a purchase of that piece of ground as it passes through there. So, we did some research, we made some phone calls. Where we're at is, the state's attorney believes that it should be surveyed. I talked to the surveyor that's doing Fritzie's work, and he said that that wouldn't complicate his process at all if he was asked to do it, because he's already there, and he's already working on other things in and close to that area. So my request of you is to approve, at the next meeting, he's going to submit proposals for doing it as an easement, or to do it as what he called an H-property, which I'm not familiar with, but he said that a lot of highways or temporary right-of-ways are done in that fashion, so. So at this point, it's really, um, still a waiting game, because we did, we did the searching for the easements, we weren't unable to find one specific to going off the statutory right-of-way or section line, so. Jamie did some work on her GIS platform, and she got, came up with some stuff, and I'll share that with those of you who haven't seen it yet, but Fritzie did say that he want, he wants compensation for that, because if he sells it, then the new owner's gonna say, well, I'm not paying for that piece of ground because, for whatever reason. So, it is gonna change that, but Jamie did the research and found the values, because they are now, and what the soil types are, so. Well, you would know better not.
It hasn't, it hasn't been changed for a long time.
No. We, the stuff I lived there was from 1965 through a couple of years either direction, and that whole road from Rockham to Valen was converted from Township Road, if there be a road, to County Road. So, yeah, it's, it has to have been there since then, and I do intend to talk to Charlie Peterman, because his dad was the one that owned that ground before this happened.
Yeah, and I.
Hopefully, he has a recollection of it.
I can see how it'd be a problem, I guess, to sell it, but then I also see that they did just sell it in, was it 22? And, and it obviously wasn't an issue.
Wasn't an issue then.
So I don't know, I mean.
I'd say precedent's been set.
So they should go, was it sold by warranty deed? Are they gonna go collect a bond on some of that? I think so. I would want that, but I can barely afford the place I live in, so.
So anyway, I guess if you wanna know how that interacts, that's probably a question for Elton Manson to answer, because.
Yeah, well, yeah, and he, I mean, no.
I say at some point in time, he's gonna have. I see at some point in time, he's going to have
And I have talked to him on this, on a couple of occasions, and, I mean, yeah, he obviously agreed that it was, should be something that should be taken care of, I mean, it'll just keep coming up, um, every time it gets transferred hands, which could be every, well, three years like it has been, for whatever, it could be in the next hundred years, I might not sell, but, um, in any events, we're, so while we needed, we're just asking for a quote from him, is that, or we're actually doing this survey?
No, he's going to submit proposals, and they'll be on the agenda for next month, but in that time, I will have talked to Charlie Peterman and see if he remembers anything, he's probably a teenager when this all happened, but, um.
And on the warranty, I didn't, I can't say that I remember exactly, but a lot of times it was subject to
Easements.
And, and destructions, you know, I mean, so.
So, anyway, it's a work in progress.
Perfect.
Okay, should we get to the meat of the meeting?
Yes.
What you have is a motion, a request for a motion to approve the fund level transfers from last meeting, because I listened to the recordings, and we just talked about it, and everybody shook their head yes, but there was no formal motion made, so, if you would be so kind
I'll make that motion.
This for all of them, then?
Yeah, just like last, the last meeting we had.
So we did do last time.
Right.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the fund level transfers discussed in our previous meeting, is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The financial reports that you didn't see in last, the last meeting's minutes or agenda are provided for you there, I'm not going to review those, so that takes us to the resolution, which is twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five dash fourteen, which basically is this, and I summarized it on the agenda for you, so that you can see what the final adjusted value, the thing to remember on these is these numbers haven't been approved by the Department of Revenue, so they are subject to change, but when you're looking at this resolution, this resolution basically says how much you're requesting of the taxpayers across the county, and then it also tells you what the resulting mill levy is, so, I don't anticipate that that's going to change a lot, if the Department of Revenue comes back with a different number, it will actually change the mechanics in the formal budget, the ins, the outs, but it's very unlikely that it'll impact what's in this resolution. Now, in the past, there have been impacts, and we have made changes, so, it's a done deal, but we have to get it to Department of Revenue by the end of the month, so.
I will move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call, vote, vote? So is this, uh
I think we do such.
We all sign them?
Yep. We all have to sign them.
Okay, Palmer?
Aye.
Ashenbaum?
Aye.
Strasberg is absent, Burnsman?
Aye.
Jensen is an aye. Motion passed.
I only need three copies, so you have three pages, just pick which three pages you're going to sign.
I'm going to do one.
I'll do one.
I'll do one.
Three of them have to be, yeah.
Yep, last year we did five.
You're going to be chairman.
Ended up throwing two away.
I'll be on the chair.
I'll be on the
You're saying you're second?
Yeah.
I don't. No?
I'll move. Nope. I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Please turn off your microphones. That emergency management thing, we can't find the one from last month, so it's just a renewed
I don't remember that.
Thank you. I got the other one here. Well, let's just do it now, then. Pardon me?
I don't know how else we were going to do it.
Thanks, sir. Yep.
It's still a day after the other one.
I don't even remember being on the first email.
Yeah, it was on the agenda.
Just throw it up there.
Let me shut it off.
Sure.
I remember you said
You did already? Excellent, thank you.
It's the live stream.
All right, you know where my seal is, right?
Yeah.
Just go ahead and seal those two while I shut all this off.
I appreciate it.